Paul Kaufman.
Here.
Susan Edmondson.
Here.
Ruth Johnson.
Present.
Ryan Wesco.
Present.
Kim York.
Here.
Kim Bailey.
Here.
Maria Davies is absent. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All is in favor, motion passes unanimously. We're now on to informational items, budget planning. Dr. Barry Monses.
All right, this is the time of year where we typically get together and start visiting about budget planning for the next fiscal year. And so really January and February are busy times in preparation for this. We're working on estimating revenues. We're working on getting budget requests from all the departments and buildings. We're trying to put all the pieces together, if you will, to try to prepare for this particular meeting. I'll just, you know, this year's a little different in that we're, you know, operating under a Plan A and Plan B type scenario with a ballot measure on for April 3rd, which would certainly impact what we do. So that's the one big difference tonight, what we're going to be visiting about compared to what we normally do. We have two different versions of our two different scenarios, if you will. So we're going to kind of, as a team, walk through some of these documents we've got prepared for you in Board Docs, and Cindy's going to kick it off, and we'll go from there.
Okay, so the first page in the package you were given tonight is our budget development calendar. And this sets forth all the major steps in budget development, starting with those strategic planning activities that we do each fall, which of course this fall included the development of our new five-year strategic plan, through the final budget approval and publishing that happens in June. One of the major components of this calendar this year regarding the technical development of the budget itself on our system is a conversion of the chart of accounts to the new budget structure that, or the new coding structure that's required by DESI, enabled to allow them to comply with federal requirements for reporting expenditures under the Every Student Succeeds Act. So that was originally planned to be completed in January, and that was delayed by DESI. So it hasn't been completed yet, but it will be done before the budget is finalized. And so we will be in compliance with that this year. Other than that, we're on target with everything that's set out here. We're having this work session tonight in March. During April, we'll find out the results of the election to decide on Proposition RP and whether we'll have an operating levy increase. We'll ask you to approve our staffing levels and the salary and benefit levels based on the recommendations made by Team Ray Peck. And then in early June, the budget will be a major component of our discussion at the board retreat, and we'll have the final budget document ready for you to approve at your regularly scheduled June meeting. Are there any questions over the timing or the components of our budget development process?
One comment I would add is the federal requirements that Cindy was referring to has to do more with us being able to track expenditures by building a little more closely because I think ESA is looking at equalization or whether or not there's equivalence between different buildings. So, you know, for the most part, we were capable of doing that anyway, but the coding structure's a little different based on how they wanted arranged. So just more of a compliance issue. Great headaches for her office, but in terms of your planning, it doesn't make much difference. So the next chart there is the operating funds, and this is one that Cindy and I have kind of passed back and forth and worked together on through the course of the winter time, getting ready for this meeting. I'm going to kind of walk through some of the major line items here and talk about some of the bigger players in our revenue planning for the new year. We've had some pretty decent news here just in the last week or so regarding personal property here in the school district. So that first line of current delinquent taxes, you see a 5% growth number there in that top line. Normally in a non-reassessment year, we would assume something like 3%, but we've gotten information from the assessor's office that personal property over the last year has grown pretty significantly, and in part because they're now tracking that by vehicles by VIN numbers. And so they can tell by the VIN number what equipment level those vehicles are. So in that regard, some vehicles got valued higher than they would have otherwise because they'd been...
In some cases, a lot.
In some cases, a lot. I've had a few people mention that to me. So the normal 3%, we're assuming a 4.5% growth in assessed value, and I think that personal property issue is helping us in this year's budget too. So the 5% is because this year's number is probably still a little low as well. So that's a big player in our budget, obviously. And that assumes in this version that the operating levy stays the same as it is right now. Prop C, we've just taken what's in the preliminary state budget, and it's based on that estimated revenue times our current ADA, our current student count this year, is how that's calculated. So we just followed along with the state budget draft on that. The other number that changed a little bit of note here is that community services line towards the bottom of that first section. That includes our early childhood program, and so we've kind of been looking at our tuition payments through the course of the first part of the year. And we don't have quite as many students as that we assumed, and we also don't have quite as many students doing the full day program as what we assumed originally when we put that tuition model together. So we backed off that number a little bit. The good news there is that according to DESI, recent notice about two weeks ago now, certain early childhood attendance can be counted in the formula next year. They've reached full funding of this year's formula, which triggers us to get some early childhood reimbursement. It's only for free and reduced lunch eligible students, and it's capped at a certain number based on 4% of our current free and reduced lunch count in K-12. So pretty convoluted formula. I mention that in part because we will have to probably adjust our tuition formula. Right now, we've got the main instruction with the certified teacher lumped in with wraparound care and our tuition. We've just kind of lumped that time altogether. We may have to divide that back out so that we can't take tuition on somebody we're getting paid for through the formula for that part of the direct instruction with our certified teacher. So we'll have to bring that to you a little bit later. On the county revenues, the state assess we're projecting down just a little bit. That tends to fluctuate up and down a few percentage points each year, so that's not too surprising. The next one is another significant one, the Formula Classroom Trust Fund. So that's all of our state formula money combined there. And that 6.1% looks like a tremendous increase, and it is, but it's a little deceptive in that this year, in the current budget, we took $700,000 of that classroom trust fund money and put it over in capital projects to help fund those improvements we did last summer. Those would get moved back into the operating funds for next year. So out of the $1.5 million in growth there, nearly half of that is just moving it from capital projects back to operating funds. The rest of the increase has to do with our assumptions on what might get funded at the state formula level, plus we've added some for those early childhood attendance numbers that we expect for eligibility for the formula. So put all those moving pieces together, and it's a pretty significant jump. But again, it would only be about half of that, were it not for just the fund transfer that we talked about briefly. Transportation, there's a little bit additional money in the budget, preliminary budget at the state level, so we're hopeful there'll be a little bit of an increase there. And then our high need funds continue to grow as our students who are eligible for that continues to grow from year to year. Then in that bottom section, the federal monies, you'll notice a decrease there in our estimated revenue. And that really has more to do with this year, we had some carryover money that we were able to use and put to use of federal monies that we can't assume will be there for next year. So we've kind of gone back to what the prior year numbers with a small growth number based on the allocation information that we have right now. So even though that shows a 5% decrease, it's not a significant dollar decrease, and it's still larger than it was the year prior. So when you put all of those together, it's about a 4% net growth, which is nearly $2.5 million of additional revenue. And again, if you just took out the $700,000, it would have been more like 1.8 otherwise. And then we added a line at the bottom. If the Prop RP passes, it would generate approximately $4.3 million additional revenue for next year. So that's basically leaving all the other calculations the same, just adding 75 cents to the operating levy for that part of the calculation. Anything that I missed there?
No.
Okay. As far as the state budget piece of this, I'll talk about it a little bit more on a different chart. We made some assumptions in prep for this meeting, not knowing for sure where that budget process was going to go. The good news is yesterday, the state budget chair indicated that his goal was to fully fund the formula again for this next year, which is good. If anything, the number that we have assumed there might actually go up a little bit based on that if that comes to pass. Any questions about that one? All right, moving on. I believe Lisa's going to talk to us about some of our staffing suggestions, recommendations moving forward. And we spent more time on this this year probably than many years because one, of the unknowns, and two, with our priorities, as we looked at them as a cabinet team, we knew if the levy does not pass, it needs to be fairly lean. We've been using some reserves the last few years, and we're to the point now where we need to stop that trend. And so our priority one items are the things that we would be recommending regardless of pass or not pass. And then as you move into things like priority two, they're probably more of the things that if it passes, we're pretty strong and comfortable about being ready to do that right away. And then three and four, some of those things are things we could do sooner rather than later, and some of them just need more time and prep and thought before we could bring them forward further. But I'll let Lisa kind of walk through and describe those, what we have proposed here.
Okay, thank you. I've tried to explain these in as much detail, but remember, I live them every day, so I understand it completely. So if you have questions as we go along, please do feel free to ask. The first item in our priority one list is the addition of 4.3 FTE due to enrollment growth adjustments. And that's over a variety of areas. First of all, our fifth grade class that is moving to sixth grade is a larger cohort. So we are needing to add two FTEs at the sixth grade level at South Middle School next year to accommodate that growth. Opposite of that, the class is smaller, or is going to be smaller now coming into fifth grade, so we will be reducing an FTE section at one of our elementary schools because we won't need that any longer. And that won't, that's being handled through retirement and attrition. So no one's losing a job or anything, but we will be able to reduce one FTE there. As far as our high school goes, they are still in the process of going through their course requests. It's a pretty intense process, but we know right now that we will need an additional science teacher. This is not a surprise to us. We anticipated this with the addition of the Project Lead the Way courses. We knew it was coming, so we are requesting that, as well as an additional special education teacher. Over the past few years, we have added special education FTEs at our lower grades at middle school, and now those cohorts are beginning to move up through and will be entering the high school. But we still have the need at the elementary and the middle school, so there isn't the opportunity to shift staff. We feel that we need to add another teacher. And we are also requesting that we increase the part-time theater arts teacher at South Middle School to a full-time position. Not only will that assist with the growth of the sixth grade class, but that program is in pretty hot demand. So this will allow more students the opportunity to take the courses that they have chosen.
I'm glad to see you do that. I actually had several people comment on that one of why wasn't that a full-time position? Because I guess the classes are pretty big this year.
We worked really hard last year with the reconfiguration to be as lean as we could on adding FTE. So we anticipated this one as well. Also, within this 4.3 additional FTE is the addition of a Sharks Den employee, that is our wraparound care at Shuler Early Learning Center. We believe that that individual is needed to appropriately staff that program, keep us in the right ratio. And of course, that's always dependent on enrollment. So should we not need this position, it wouldn't be hired. The second piece of the priority one is the reconfiguration of the facilities department. And again, just like the FTE, this has several moving parts to it. The first would be the addition of a facilities director. That person will be responsible for supervising and coordinating the maintenance, grounds, custodial, and energy management programs. We believe this position is necessary to oversee the increasing sophistication and quantity of our district assets, as well as manage those assets that continue to age and need additional maintenance. If you'll recall, about five years ago, we had a very similar position, but when the individual left the district, we did not replace that. So we feel that the department has been, the department as a whole has been limping along for about five years now, doing the best they can. But as you're all aware, our maintenance department has handled many of the projects that we would normally outsource, which saves us money. But that, being able to do that requires oversight, coordination, and facilitation. So that's why we are suggesting a director to oversee the entire department as a whole. Along with the addition of a director, the reconfiguration would include adding an additional salary level into our job descriptions and salary schedule. We currently have staff that are on two grades in our maintenance department. There's entry level, and there's skilled maintenance. Skilled maintenance is the individuals that come to us with education and certification in areas such as electricians and HVAC. We don't have an intermediate level position, which we see the need for. Not only will it allow us to have individuals who support the skilled maintenance individuals, but will also give us another layer of depth should we, someone leave the district. We wouldn't be left hanging with no one to help facilitate that part of the department. This, what this does is it essentially adds a middle grade on our salary schedule. That will allow us to keep employees that we have that currently have those skills, but it will also allow us to recruit individuals should and if we need to. And then finally, the last part of that reconfiguration is changing our maintenance supervisor salary grade to be at the same level as the custodial supervisor grade. As of right now, the maintenance supervisor is one step higher than the custodial supervisor because of everything that that position facilitated. With the addition of a director, we believe that the director would take on those additional responsibilities that the maintenance supervisor previously had, and we can level those two positions on the same grade, which will be a little bit of a cost savings as part of the reconfiguration.
Now, that was a lot. Is there any questions about that concept of just reorganizing and adding that director level?
I'm glad we're going to show our people that we value those certifications and stuff to help keep them and get them when we do need them.
And then the final part of the priority one section is the addition of a few extra duty stipends for student activities. We currently have a French and bowling club. We have for the last few years, participation has grown in this, and to the level that we believe it should be on our extra duty salary schedule. Currently, we are compensating the sponsor through our green sheets, that we call them, through the activity pay, but it definitely should be on our scale, just like the other activities that we have. We also are suggesting that we create a stipend for our culinary program. I think we've all been the recipients of the extra time that the individual puts into that program, and the extra time outside of the regular school day, again, but we believe designates and the need for placing that on the extra duty schedule. Also, this includes an instrumental music stipend. We have, this stipend supports when our kids go to district and state contests. We have three band teachers currently with this stipend, but we have four band teachers. So percussionists are one of the groups that also go to district and state and compete. So we believe that that teacher should be given that stipend as well. And honestly, it was probably more of an oversight when we added that fourth band teacher. And then finally, we're requesting the addition of a National Junior Honor Society Assistant for our middle schools, based upon the number of students involved in that organization, specifically at East, but very likely at South too. When we do initiation, and I think it's about this time of year, the number of students involved before the eighth grade leaves, it grows so much that it's too many students for one person to supervise. So currently, we just have a, one sponsor of the club or organization that we're proposing that we add an assistant to that. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about those priority one items.
Would the, excuse me, the reduction of the one fifth grade teacher, would they move up to the sixth grade?
They could, but we...
Or are they just going to readjust?
We actually are readjusting. We had, we've had retirements.
Okay.
So there's no need to transition that. If everybody stayed and nobody left, we would do that, yes. We would move an FTE up, but it's worked out through attrition.
Okay.
Okay. We can always come back to priority one if you'd like when we're finished here. Moving on to priority two, there are several items here. The first being, we are, again, and as Dr. Monses said, these are the items that should the levy pass, we feel very confident we should move up and go ahead and implement this coming school year. The first is the addition of a behavior intervention, or let me try that again, a behavior interventionist, with the hope of also having that individual be a licensed clinical social worker. So this request is to expand our current behavior interventionists. We have three. And by hiring an additional specialist, again, with the goal of finding someone who is credentialed and as a licensed clinical social worker, this would augment our current behavioral supports and move us closer to a building-based model. So having a support in each building versus shared among the buildings. The individual obviously hired for this position would support our students' behavioral and mental health needs. The second item in this list is a part-time data...
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
If they're a licensed clinical social worker, is that pay comparable to what they would make in the general public?
Well, much like school nurses, we know that salary in the public education realm isn't always equal to that in the real world, I guess. That would certainly be something that would likely cause this position to have a higher salary rate.
Yeah. We hope to be competitive.
Right.
We really do.
And we also are being very realistic, and it may be difficult to find someone with this certification, but that's our goal.
Yep.
And so does the intervention, does she then help train at the building level?
Yes, and the district level. They, the current three that we have service all of our schools, they're worn pretty thin.
Thanks.
So when we were at the Missouri Task Force on Mental Health, what I was hearing from some of the other schools is they're bringing in not just social workers, but there's like five fingers to mental health. They're bringing in a variety, so they were bringing in from the different disciplines of the mental health. Why are we locking in to just one?
I think that's a good question. I really think it, some of it comes down to feasibility. I really believe that being able to find a licensed clinical social worker who has the skill to also be a behavior interventionist is a possibility. I worry if we expand beyond that much, if we're going even deeper into the specialties regarding mental health, into the therapy realm and things, that that's not exactly the skill that we're looking for. We're really looking for that community liaison. We're looking for that partner of families, more the social worker side, and the ability with someone with the ability to work with our staff on the behavior aspects. I do not think it shouldn't, we should preclude ourselves from thinking bigger in the future if we need additional resources that might be a more clinical or therapeutic type. But I think at this point in time, this is what our buildings need on a building basis.
Along those... I was going to say, I don't disagree with that. That is the specialty of social workers, is connect people to their social resources. So that is their specialty. I think, I would just rather you say licensed mental health professional, so you're not locking yourself in.
I think we could...
Having a goal of, you know, we've got a series of this, but let's say you have someone come in that just has the skills but is different. I just don't want to lock you in on a document. So I don't disagree with starting with a licensed social worker, because that is their specialty, but don't lock yourself in.
Okay.
Go ahead, Ruth.
I was just going to say, with sitting in the PD committee, the last couple of meetings, they've been talking about, you know, what is their PD going to look like next year? And over and over and over and over again, you know, you keep hearing the mental health aspect and how they want that training to help them help their kids. I mean, that's their ultimate goal. They want the knowledge so that they can help their kids.
Yeah.
I get both sides of that from teachers, so I kind of hear we want training because we want to help our kids, and we shouldn't have to be mental health professionals.
They also wanted to help manage their classroom.
We've been talking about that as well.
Yeah, so I mean, I hear...
That was today's conversation as well.
So I think there's a fine line. We don't want them to be mental health professionals.
Correct.
So it's finding that fine line of giving them the training, but also taking some of that responsibility off of them.
Well, and I think they also look at it from a classroom management perspective.
Yeah, I agree.
Being able to do those things.
It's a, we know it's a complicated topic. We also know that we really need to support our classroom teachers. And we need people in our buildings with these expertise to support them so they can continue to teach the students that they have. I think this is the beginning of our conversation, but these supports are very necessary.
So along all those lines, and this may be addressed later in the package, but one of the things that came up clearly in our strategic planning process from our community and our teachers was mental health. And I applaud our first steps here in the conversation. I would like to see us look a bit more broadly at this. We have, in terms of having a plan, you know, we have a curriculum for math, we have a curriculum for science. You know, do we need a curriculum or a plan for mental health? And that could address, in the classroom, it could address actual curriculum in terms of getting a comprehensive curriculum. Right now, we have the pillars of community and, you know, character and all of that. A lot of good things, I'm not minimizing those. But I feel like we need to get our arms around this and have a much more comprehensive approach than what we have. And I know the idea isn't just we're going to throw a person at it, but right now, it looks like we're just going to throw a person at it. I think it's much more comprehensive than that, and I think our community wants more than that. And so if we need a special work session for it, if we need the curriculum committee to get to work on it, I don't know what the right answer is. I'm sure you all know. But I think it's more than putting an FTE in a plan. And maybe it's addressed later. And I do also want to apologize, I'm not feeling very well tonight, so if I'm not articulating very well, I apologize.
I would just kind of add, echo onto that, within our strategic plan, that mental health strategy is there. The action steps are kind of sequential in that we were going to start with assessing what's available within the community itself at large, look at what those gaps are, and then start filling in those gaps. And that's going to take a little more time and kind of a process, as you would describe. I think this is our first step to get something in place sooner rather than later as we do that process, so.
A component or a portion of that plan.
And the other thing that I would just caution on is that to embrace the issues that we're talking about here, you're talking about changing the face and the scope of education as it exists today. So, you know, at what point do we start asking, what business are we in? And at that point, I mean, and that's another discussion for another time.
Sure.
Because if we're going to be all things to all people, then you have a big challenge ahead of you.
Sure, no doubt. And I think the goal...
And I just want to agree with that. And that is exactly why I think we need a plan. Otherwise, we're going to be here and here and here, and we're going to be the wrong thing to the wrong people. We need to decide what we're going to be and get everyone on the same page with it.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think you and I are probably on the same page on this, but I agree with both of you. We're in the education business, and education is preventative. So I love your idea of a curriculum that's proactive, preventative, educating them on basic mental health needs, how to manage things, things like that, as part of educating them, and then also having some clearer boundaries of what is our responsibility as a district and what do we need to refer off. But we need to have places to refer them to.
And I think the event that the district held last month is the perfect solution. It's about forming the right partnerships, because if we try to do it in-house and try to meet every single one of those needs, everybody's going to be frustrated, no one's going to be happy.
And we're going to run out of money.
Real quick.
Yeah, I think the goal would be to get it, those connections made to the resources that exist outside the district as much as we possibly can. And the person that I would envision in this role is still more of a triage-type person, kind of the front end, helping identify and then helping families make those connections to the extent we can.
For the sake of the board and the community, there are a lot of conversations going on right now, that brainstorming, there's a lot of people at the table at those conversations, not only staff and our specialists in-house, but also pulling in Children's Mercy and quite a few of those resources that we pulled in for the Good Neighbor, Strong Community event. It is a big problem, and there's a lot of schools that are trying to address it, but the way they've addressed it, I'm not sure is a good direction for us. So what they're doing is creating a clinic in-house where they take care of everything, dental, vision, all of those things. And so...
And it's not just an issue that we're trying to tackle here. I spent all weekend in Washington DC, and we had conversations at the county level all across the country, and everybody's trying to figure out how to deal with the mental health issue that's become pervasive in our culture. So it's, it's not just us here, it's, it's a nationwide challenge. And, and so, I mean, hopefully, you know, we have a lot of very intelligent people at the table that can put together solutions that then can, you know, be disseminated out and implemented.
And then I, I think the last thing that I would just like to put out for the board and just to reiterate, I, I know this is our starting point and there's a lot to do, but I think there are things we can be doing simultaneously. And I, I am very concerned about the curriculum component. And would like to see us get on that quickly. And I'm, when I'm talking curriculum, I don't mean, you know, there's gonna be a mental health curriculum. But we do a lot right now in our schools that is, in a sense, mental health curriculum. And we need to, to come together and get a comprehensive approach on that so we're all on the same page and to build in the professional development that our teachers need. And curriculum could be for kids, it could be for staff, and, but it all needs to link and come together. And I just don't feel like we have that focus right now. And that's something we can do now, today, we don't need to wait for staffing to do that.
I would agree. One of the things that we, in our last brainstorming session in moving forward, we're just trying to figure out how to do that well. I, I wholeheartedly, I want to see a proactive, preventative curriculum, starting in kindergarten and working their way up, even if it's just two days in PE, right? That they're talking, working on breathing and some things like that. So I wholeheartedly agree with you on that. Another thing that I think is gonna be most effective is if we do training across the board. So let's say that we're teaching, we're training on conflict management to our teenagers, then we need to be offering the same class to our parents, right? We need to do, and, and that would be where the foundation comes in. The school's not gonna be responsible for teaching the parents, but coming alongside, so we're hitting the same topics for everyone, so everyone in the whole system can be informed, as well as people in the community that want to.
Well, and I would want to, while I agree with doing that, we want to caution of putting more under our teachers. You know, I just sat and heard them today how they're all grown, because now on top of everything else they've had to do for training, because of legislation, they've gotta sit and do another two hours for dyslexia training. You know, we just keep adding on to them, and they don't have the time.
And that's, and also that's why I first brought it up here. I would have expected to see four or five, I, I would have expected to see more money in this for those things, and maybe I just don't know what some of your abbreviations are.
And we, we have other pri, we have, it funnels through.
To Ru's point, we can't just put this on our existing teachers, we need more staff. So I'm gonna, she's nodding, I'm gonna wait, you see, okay.
We definitely have other recommendations that we believe support that focus on mental health. Just a, one, to leave that, one more thing. We do have one district social worker that's serving our high school. And we used to have two social workers, but many, many years ago, that was a budget reduction. So hopefully by adding this back in, we have, we're adding some supports in that we previously lost. So it's truly just a caseload issue. You know, our three that are behavior interventionists and our one social worker just can't manage any, anymore, so.
It's a numbers issue.
It's a numbers issue, yes. The second thing on the list is a part-time database administrator. Right now, the district has only, has one FTE in our technology department with the responsibility of managing our current database assessment and reporting systems. This includes the MOSIS system that Desi uses to collect data that directly relates to our AYP. So that's a lot for one person to accomplish, and it continues to grow. So we think that those expectations on one individual are a little unreasonable, and that's why we're requesting to add a part-time person to support that effort. The third item is a core resource math teacher to be shared by our middle schools. So the person would travel between the two. This is a position that we had prior to the reconfiguration and going to two middle schools. So a year ago, we removed this position. Again, during the reconfiguration, we were working hard to minimize the financial impact of needing additional staff. After living without that position for a year, though, our administration and teachers at the middle level have found that it is a very valuable position, and they, they miss it. Our students need the interventions that this individual was providing in math. And so we are asking at this level, and I'll talk about this again a couple of, on the next priority tier, but we're asking for one teacher that would travel between the two buildings. The fourth item is an increase in pay for our parent educators. These are our part-time individuals who go and do home visits and provide services and information to our families with young children. Currently, a parent educator receives $35 for a visit. And that, that, the definition of visit is the planning and preparation, the time spent in the home, and then the post-work of doing the reporting and things that are required. So they receive $35 for that. This rate has not increased in a very long time. And when I say a very long time, I mean as longer than anyone here can remember. So I would say 20 years, but I wouldn't want it to be 19 and be wrong. But it has been a very long time. So we're requesting that that be increased to help us retain the individuals who work for us in that capacity and to be competitive, a little more so within the market. Additionally, those individuals are required to do some training each year as well as some mandatory meetings. And in the past, they have just been paid substitute hourly rate for that time. This proposal is that they would be paid the same professional hourly rate that our other teachers do for curriculum writing, tutoring, things like that.
So how many visits do they make in a year? Is there an average?
Oh, a lot. I, I could easily get that for you, hundreds.
Okay.
A lot, yeah.
How many individuals?
We have three that work for us part-time, and then we have a parent as teacher's coordinator, Cindy Watson. She is on a salary schedule and is, is full-time staff and manages the program and coordinates. Okay, the next item is to request the expansion of our Compass program. As you will remember, our Compass program services students with significant behavioral needs, our students that are high-risk. And we are requesting an additional three FTE to essentially clone the classroom that we currently have with a regular ed and special education teacher and a paraprofessional. This would essentially double this capacity of the students we're able to serve. We also, one of the things that happened with this room is our fifth grade previously wasn't in elementary. So now fifth grade is part of the elementary setting, so we actually added a grade level that is serviced by this classroom as well. By expanding this program internally, we may be able to eliminate some of the costs of sending students to other agencies and other schools to provide the services. Just keeping three students in district versus having them go outside of the district can save us anywhere between $60,000 and $85,000 a year. So this is one of the programs that we can keep students here and work with them and save money in that manner.
Does that money come under the contract services?
Yes.
So the Compass is K-5 now.
Correct.
What happens at 6-8? The kids that are in Compass at K-5, they're now moving up to the 6-8. Where do they go when they move up?
To school. There is not a dedicated classroom, they are.
So do they lose all those supports that they've had for K-5?
No, absolutely not. They, they lose the self-contained one classroom. But really, even in our Compass classroom, kids are going back to the regular classroom. We try to transition that because that's the most ideal setting. So at the middle school level, remember kids transition between teachers during the day? So they have special education teacher support, they have para-professional support. They're in classrooms for learning as well as in resource rooms for learning. So it's just a different kind of support.
So if, I'm sorry to mean.
With the hope that as we, again, our goal is that they're in the regular education setting as much time as possible. So if, the goal of the Compass would be that we provide services at the earlier grades to help move towards that as they go into the secondary.
So if it's a behavioral risk at K-5, and it's not necessarily a medically deemed issue that they can't get sped, what happens to them? Or is, am I missing a piece?
No, the majority, the vast majority, if not all, currently, these students.
They're on IEPs?
Yes, they're on IEPs.
So there's a medical diagnosis?
Yes, I would actually, as a part of the, not, yeah, not necessarily medical, but they all have IEPs. Well, I would like to talk about expansion and have begun the conversation with, with expansion, including students with, could possibly conduct, conduct disorder, not often IEP diagnosis, but presents significant classroom disruption and concerns.
How many students are in the, in the classroom?
Oh, right now, I think we have 13, 13 or 14.
I.
Go ahead.
I really like that idea of expanding, because I, the biggest complaint I get is that it's the behavioral struggle students that are making it hard for the teachers, and it's pulling away from the education of the other students. And so absolutely, I want to prioritize keeping as many students in the room as possible. I really want to do that. But once it kind of tips the scale toward we're taking away a lot of education from our other students, we need to reevaluate that as an, education is our first priority. And all of our students need and deserve an education, and I'm gonna say all of our students need and deserve an education. So if one student is keeping the others from being educated, we need to expand it so they can get good education in another place and not take education away from the rest of it. And, and so I, if we could expand that without too much trouble, I could see that being a helpful solution. I think that's the biggest thing that our teachers are getting frustrated with, is having to deal with all these behavioral issues, these extreme, so I'll say it through a different lens. So in the mental health world, we're seeing more and more issues at younger and younger ages, right? So they're having to deal with some things that they didn't have to deal with two years ago, four years ago. There's a growing mental health issue. It's hitting younger and younger and younger. I, I now have a five-year-old that cuts, that's ridiculous. We didn't see that five years ago, okay? So we're seeing it in the mental health world, our teachers are experiencing it and living it, and so we need to adjust to that.
On the Compass program, how does that work in terms of, are those students identified towards the beginning of the year, and then the enrollment in that class doesn't change throughout the year? Or is it very ebb and flow?
Ebb and flow.
This week it's these 10 kids, and next week it's five.
I wouldn't say it's a weekly.
No, 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 it's definitely in between those two things. It is not always, they can qualify in through our process with a behavior interventionist, our principals and teachers input, and parent input as well. Often by that time, parents are requesting additional support because of the struggles they're currently having. So kids do qualify and can go in mid-year or whenever needed, but often they'll stay until they see significant success. A lot of times they've been, because we have one location for our Compass environment currently at Brattle Ridge, they'll be out in the regular setting for a number of classes or most of the day, but they'll want to finish their fifth grade year, or they'll want to stay there the rest of the year or even the next, and finish their elementary experience in one location.
Well, along with Kim's point, it's been a while, I think, since we've seen our behavioral intervention pyramid diagram.
Might be time to see that again. Okay.
As we're working on the budget, I think that would be a good time to revisit that and to think about where we're allocating our funds and if we have a better or different or new and improved answer to that. Because just quick math, you know, two of these classrooms, we could combine a different classroom for every two of these we create. It's not a one-to-one money thing, but it's not, we're not just adding. There's consolidation that can take place elsewhere, and I think it's a good time to look at that in light of all the things we're talking about.
Well, and I think sometimes that's a struggle from parents, you know? They get to hear their kids come home and say, you know, Johnny is always causing problems in class, so we sit there half the class because he was in trouble and the teacher couldn't deal with him. And I remember that from when my kids were in school. So it's not a new issue, I think it's just an ever-growing issue. And it's frustrating for our teachers, I'm sure.
So we're looking at increasing the program by 138,000. What's the budget hit for the program currently?
It would be similar to that, I think we might have one more para in the room.
Right.
So it's, it's that much or a little more.
Right at that about, yeah.
So we're looking at spending $280,000 on the Compass program. And how many kids flow through this?
Currently, we have 13, we'd like to double that as needed.
On the flip side of that, it's cheaper than paying for them to be in an academy and another.
Are they, are they repeat offenders?
Once they're identified with an issue that warrants getting to that classroom now, and they're usually on an IEP, it's not like they made a bad decision and that put them in there. It's because they've gone through an IEP process, it's very formal and structured, to say that's the best placement for them right now.
We're talking about students with some, they can have some significant concerns.
No, I've had some parents that loved that program.
I, I understand.
Yes, and I think that when we look at that, our other option, and we do have students that, we are still responsible for providing a free and appropriate public education. And often if it's not in our environment, it's in a, in a Gillis or it's in another facility in the Kansas City metro area where we're paying that tuition. At between 26, is 26,000 a year is on the low side, up to 50. And transportation, and up to $50,000 a year. So if we're even able to serve three, four, five of those students here instead of that.
That's a fact we're on.
But the question is, is how much of, of education time is disrupted while they're still in the mainstream classroom before they move to the Compass?
Oh, no, that is, we absolutely need to look at.
Because, you know, we're in the business of educating as many people as possible. If there are some people who, for whatever reason, want to disrupt, do you, do you look at the benefit of the one or the benefit of the many? And, you know, we're dealing with limited budgets, I mean, we can only spend so much money. How much money do we spend before we finally say, okay, what's the other alternative? Because it's, there's a higher return on our investment to eliminate that person from the classroom and move them into a different program, as opposed to every two months, we have a disruption in the classroom or, you know, for however long it takes before they're finally placed there. You know, I want to do what's in the best interest of everybody.
Yeah.
But you have to do what's in the best interests of everybody.
To Kim's point, the pyramid, yeah, the pyramid is there.
Yeah, which is why I think looking at our interventions as a whole, this is one piece of about 10 or 20 more things.
Yeah, it's close to the top.
Which is why, again, I come back to, I think it's a good time to evaluate the whole thing and look at all the resources that we are putting towards all of the pieces and see if we need to reallocate.
So some of these kids right now, I, I agree. You said, you said we're shipping, or not shipping, but sending them to other, how many students do we send?
Oh, I just pulled the list the other day, and I'd hate to guess and be wrong, but it was.
Is it between 15 and 20 roughly?
That we send elsewhere.
It might actually be a little bit higher than that.
So how much money are we spending on?
It's a considerable amount.
So 20 times 30,000 is what?
That'd probably be a pretty good even middle ground.
$600,000?
There are students, though, that we're always going to have to utilize other.
I, I understand.
You're never going to completely remove that need.
I just think there's a, there's kind of the, the behaviors are degrading rapidly in our culture in general in some ways. And so we're seeing that play out in the education system. So the more we can kind of embrace that here, take some of that pressure off of our teachers, but still only sending them there as an absolute last resort. I think if we expand this middle intervention, I think it takes the pressure off of, it, it helps our teachers, take some of the complaint off of that. It's the most cost-effective way to do that, and the best way to do that is reevaluate this, this pyramid.
But, but if, if, if it's, if it's the same child, or, you know, that they spend a month or they spend two months in the Compass and then go back, and then we have to send them, I mean, that, that's.
That's very rare, they stay.
Once they're in it, they stay in it.
For the year, or often it's the rest of their elementary experience, even if they move out, they'll stay.
So then at some point, does it, does it become, I mean, because we're talking about a board perspective, and we're concerned about finance here. At what point does it become more cost-effective to, to outsource that as opposed to keeping that in-house?
Well, and I think that's what they're saying, that's not cost-effective.
It's not.
Well, but.
Pay 30,000 or 40,000.
It's amazing what they'll charge to have a student.
And the space and availability. Oftentimes, we may have a student that we believe needs an outside placement, but no, but there isn't a placement available.
So is that, is that another conversation that needs to be had to where, is, instead of us trying to do it in-house, you know, pool with three or four other districts, because if everybody is having the same issue, then create another resource to where it solves the problem more cost-effectively than everybody trying to handle it in-house by themselves.
I think that's a conversation, as we move forward with our strategic plan and look at our mental health pyramid and our resources, we probably need to have all of these conversations, because that's where this topic really is. It's time to reevaluate and look. I'm worried about the teachers we currently have in the classroom and getting them the support they need.
Yeah.
I think we need to be, now, I think so. I think we need to be thinking about these things before we approve the budget. Oh, in, in June, I mean, we have some. Oh, in, in June, I mean, we have some time. I'm not saying we have to have them all spelled out, but we're going to be making some significant commitments.
You've got five minutes.
Well, you know, with all hopes that, you know, everything passes in April, we're going to be making some very significant, long-term commitments that we can't just change the following year.
Absolutely.
And so, these are the kinds of things that if we want to address the things that we told our community we're going to address, we need to have this information and be having these conversations.
I agree, I agree, I agree. Is there any other things they need to take in consideration as they put stuff together to bring to us for our decision in June on this topic? Okay.
Thank you.
The final item in the Priority Two list is the addition of a campus supervisor at South Middle School. Currently, we do have this position at East Middle School, and again, during the reconfiguration based upon enrollment, Mr. Randolph felt that they could get by without this position at South, much like the math teacher. They have realized that they would very much benefit from having this position. Campus supervisors do a variety of tasks to assist the administration, teachers, and students. They supervise during lunch, but they also supervise during times of transition. They monitor the camera systems, and they escort students between classrooms who don't, can't travel by themselves. So, again, we didn't add this last year, but South has requested it, and we think it's a valid request.
It's unfortunate that it has to be added.
We agree.
The good thing is, though, that that's an extra set of eyes, that, that's their focus, is to be aware of everything going on in and around the building. So, whether it's at arrival time, dismissal time, lunchtime, class change time, and then those special cases when you need help, help with a student getting from the classroom, it's, it's a good hand to have on, onsite.
Any questions on the Priority Two items?
Again, PD today, just, there was a teacher that made the comment she didn't want to be in a classroom and have to wait ten minutes for somebody to come help her when she's got a, a major student issue. So, I think it's a good thing.
I don't want to tangent too much, and, but if this levy passes, are we going to be able to add more security to our buildings? And is that, I, I've, is that part of this plan? Can you tell me a little bit about that? Because if we're getting more money, I, I want to make sure we're addressing some of the major concerns.
So, there's, there's multi-faces to that. We've had a lot of conversations the last few weeks about what that might look like. When we shared with you the capital improvement plan last work session back in February, there were things on that like in, in replacing intercom systems in Evermore Elementary, and camera security improvements that I think four elementary schools were on the list between either tier one or tier two. So, there's some of the physical pieces that come with that that could be supported with a, a passage of Prop RP. But then on the other side, you're, you're seeing some of these positions that deal with mental health-related type things, behavior issues, so some of those are security-related to a certain extent. What's not on here per se, you know, a campus supervisor is not an armed person. The other question then is, do we, do we need to investigate another SRO? And so, as a board, that's in point, input, we would want to hear from you. I, I, that would be, if we're going to do something as a physical staff member to really try to ramp that up, to me, the SRO would be my choice, and you can, you could plan on spending somewhere in the neighborhood of fifty-five, fifty-six thousand dollars to have one comparable to the three we have now. So, that would be another tier that we could put in to get more coverage across the district, as an example, so.
I would like to look into getting more SRO, SROs on our campuses, a more visible presence on that. I think, I, I believe that would be a good next step as a deterrent.
I think this is a bigger topic, and I don't necessarily disagree with more SROs, but I do have concerns about adding too many SROs as opposed to having campus security. I think there are pros and cons on both sides. It's not something we need to debate tonight. But it is something that, again, I, I keep bringing up the things that I think we need to talk about. I think we need to have enough time to have a conversation about that.
I agree.
And to see what the different options are, and as a board to, to talk about the pros and cons of those different options, you know? We could each rattle off ten things that might help security. Well, we need to think about those and not just say, well, you know, we're just going to go down this path. I'd like to hear administration's thoughts and reasons on the things that they would suggest on that. But again, I think it's something we need to get on an agenda and discuss, so we can get it properly budgeted.
And, and I know it's an expense, but I think it's probably time to seriously consider putting cameras in classrooms.
That's something that we discussed last night, the Citizens Advisory Committee, and Dr. Monses alluded to the fact of just the money, you know, that we're slowly adding things as we get the money for.
But, you know, because, I mean, it's great if you add an SRO, but if he doesn't know what part of the building they need help in, well, you, you, one person can only be in one spot at any given time, but you have adequate camera coverage throughout your entire building, a teacher has issues, and you have somebody watching a camera, they can provide assistance a lot quicker than somebody who, you know, and that's, and that's just the challenge. Plus, the kids, if they know they're on camera, there's also an element that, and they might behave, they, they might not, but you do have that, that added element of somebody's watching them.
And, and that is a very good example of, again, the need for us to have a comprehensive plan, and I know we have a comprehensive security plan, but the meaning of that is changing. And so, in order to allocate resources and vote on a budget and how we're going to spend our money, in my mind, I need a five-year plan. I need to know, what is our goal? Is our goal to have cameras in every classroom? Is our goal ultimately to have three SROs at every building? What's the goal? And do we all agree on that goal? And, and let's articulate it, put it in a plan so that we can all be on the same page.
I do think it will be evolutionary in fact that I would suggest cameras in the classroom might be an option, but we need cameras in hallways probably first, and then the next layer might be cameras in the classroom, so.
Excluding the locker rooms and the bathrooms, we should have eyes on every part of it.
And again, it would be nice to see that laid out in its own specific plan on how we're going to do that.
I, I agree. So, I'm hearing safety and mental health. We really want some comprehensive plans on.
Well, I'm just going to caution you that even if it passes, we could use all of that money to address those two issues and have nothing left to take care of anything else. So, these are expensive things we're talking about.
And absolutely.
Balance is important.
And that's just more the reason why we need to have plans, so we can decide, you know? We have to make some tough choices because these things are expensive. So, how are we going to make those choices?
And we have to respect the feedback we received from our strategic planning group. We're not going to just not do what they asked us to do. Yeah, so, we're, we need to, we'll be working our strategic plan, and we need to make sure that mental health did come up in that. I'm not sure if security did or not, but I, I think that our community likes the idea of us being safe. But we, I agree with your balance concept. We can't just put it here. We've committed that we're, we're distributing it, but would like to have a, a plan and a, a general idea of what it would cost, and a comprehensive plan. I don't want to piecemeal it, I want to do it well. Any other comments? Moving on.
And the next section, the Priority Three items, as Dr. Monses did mention, we, we have talked a lot about these, and really, you know, you could argue sometimes that a three should be a two and a two should be a three. This was our stab at prioritizing them based upon feedback from our administrators. But, so this section has several items in it, the first being stipends for Project Lead the Way Student Activity Clubs at our elementary schools. Essentially, this is like what I spoke of in the Priority One with adding the bowling and the French. We would, what we're asking is to add a section onto our extra-duty salary schedule that would stipend elementary clubs for Project Lead the Way. It's their intent to do some launching of Project Lead the Way at elementary schools, hopefully, this next year, and this would, would support that. The next item on the list is the addition of an instructional technology specialist. Currently in the district, we have one instructional technology specialist for the entire district. He basically, he works more with the sixth through twelfth grades because we do have digital learning teachers at our elementary schools, but he's one person, and he does support the elementaries on occasion as well. So, with the addition of all of the technology in our schools and classrooms and in the kids of, hands of our kids, we need our teachers to have professional development and learning as well as support. We also anticipate that this need will increase or continue to increase as we add the MCC and early college programming, just that online support that will be needed.
This position is one that writes professional development, helps teachers with online classes, and, and does those in-the-classroom type supports that they're asking a lot more for.
See, I could easily see that be moved up to a one with all that we've invested in technology and trying to make sure our teachers have the proper PD and stuff. But this could easily be a one.
There's someone in this district that could argue each one of these is a one.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm just talking about money.
Absolutely. Right along with that, the next item is for an additional technology field technician. Currently, we have three individuals in our technology department who complete work orders and provide the service for our technology. In fact, last year, they completed over two thousand three hundred work orders between the three of them while supporting three thousand devices. Next year, the number of devices will increase, perhaps as you look through the technology plan coming up, by about eighteen hundred devices. So, it is just becoming, again, it's a sheer numbers issue. The technology department feels they need another tech to, to manage and to help support. The next item is to expand our lunchroom and recess supervision support at the elementary schools. And this one's a little bit trickier to explain. If you'll recall, last year at this time, we asked for our, we call them student supervisors now, our student supervision instead of lunchroom and recess monitors, but we asked to increase the number of hours they work a day from six to eight. So, currently, two years ago, we had two lunchroom recess monitors at every elementary that worked three hours each day. Last year, we requested to increase the number of hours worked by, to eight. So, some schools have a four-hour and a four-hour person, some have a five-hour and a three-hour person. We let the principals decide how they needed to use that, those extra hours. However, what we're finding is although our intent was good, we are not able to retain people in these positions because of the salary level and the fact that they're part-time. So, what this is requesting is to increase our current student supervisors, just one of them at each elementary school, to, to a full-time status, which essentially really only gets us about two more hours of support per building. The cost associated with that is really driven a lot by the benefits that we would be required to provide as a full-time employee. And just as a reminder, those, that supervision, the goal was that they would help supervise recess with the addition of, one teacher's always out there, but the supervisors would do that, and the other teachers on the grade level would have that recess time as additional planning time.
And have we found that that was useful?
When we can fill the positions.
When there's someone.
Yeah.
So, we are having a hard time filling the position because it's not a full-time position?
I think there's probably several factors. One of, that's surely one part of it. It also is, the hours are a bit different, you know, they're middle-of-the-day kind of hours, and, you know, it's, it's probably not a real easy job supervising a lunchroom and a playground, you know, and it gets cold outside.
Yeah, it does.
I think it's a, a mix of things, but that's one of our thoughts. And the next item is to add an HVAC technician to our maintenance department. We currently have one FTE that is responsible and has the knowledge, really, that's why there's only one, for servicing all of our HVAC needs as a district. As we continue, just with the high school expansion, we added many additional units. Our units continue to age and require maintenance. We know the better we take care of them now, the longer they last, which is a money savings. So, the maintenance department sees the need for an additional HVAC tech. The next item is related to an item I discussed in Priority Two, which is their core resource math teacher. In the Priority Two list, there was one teacher requested that would be shared between the two middle schools. In this priority, we're adding an additional FTE, so the two schools would not have to share that position. Secondary process coordinator is the next item. Our process coordinators work in the special education department, keeping us in compliance with IEPs and evaluations. Again, this is something we've discussed for a lot of years. This person doesn't work directly with kids every day, but works on the IEPs and the testing, parent communications, and things like that.
Is this at the high school?
Yes.
So, we don't currently have one of those?
We have one.
We have one.
For, for the school.
For the whole high school?
Yeah.
And we have how many IEP students?
I believe her, it's, her caseload's well over a hundred and thirty?
Oh, I, I think it's a hundred and that. I'd have to go back and check. It's, it's.
It's significant.
Significantly higher, and it continues to grow. And this is a position that we've looked at each year, and it's just something that every year in the budget priority process gets.
Positions that are directly working with kids become a priority, and this gets moved down the list.
That would be shared across buildings?
No, it would just be at the high school.
Just be at the high school.
Okay.
The next item is an additional custodial position at the high school, simply to support the addition of the square footage that was added in the addition.
And we did add some last year. We just.
This would just be more helpful.
One additional to help even the square footage a little bit.
And finally, a warehouse delivery position. Our warehouse currently has two employees dedicated to it. One is receiving, one is the mail courier and delivery. We used to have three. This third position was cut during a budget reduction process. What we're finding, or our maintenance department is finding, is they're having to allocate time to assist with some of the deliveries and movement of things because it requires two people to do it. Our receiving individual can't leave because he's the receiving individual, so maintenance workers are being pulled to assist in the delivery, which is causing them to get behind in their work orders. What questions can I answer?
By adding the warehouse delivery position, would that free up maintenance enough to not necessarily have to have the HVAC tech?
No.
Well, what, what's the cost associated with that?
With?
With which one?
Well, i- if you pull a maintenance worker off, what's, what's the cost that's incurred by pulling them off his maintenance position? I mean, I understand there's a delay, but what's the cost?
I don't know of any firm way to calculate what that exact cost is. I mean, it's just lack of efficiency or lack of, some work orders getting delayed more, which eventually that lead to more problems and breakdowns, but it's hard to quantify which ones would have been because that worker got pulled off. I don't know if there's any direct way to calculate.
Are you saying maybe we should just hire another?
No.
Maintenance worker and then?
But if we're looking at a, a, a budgetary perspective, we, we have a warehouse delivery position, whereas it's, it would be nice to have, but if we don't fill it, there's not necessarily any cost associated with not filling it, or as opposed to some of these other things, there's, there's a more of a benefit in putting that position on as opposed to the other.
And that's why it's at the bottom of the Priority Three list.
Yeah, if you were asking, would you rather have an HVAC position or a, or warehouse delivery, it would probably be the HVAC position.
And that's, and so, you know, as, as I'm looking at these lists, and, and there's one that's on a Priority Four that, you know.
I have some thoughts on that, we'll get to that.
Fair enough, but, but when I see, when I see that one at a Position Four, and I see these other ones at a Position Three, I just ask questions as to why it was put there.
And a, a, along those, kind of along those lines, and I'm sorry to keep asking for additional information tonight, I seem to be on a roll, but, you know, we went through the strategic planning process, and there were, you know, we had our bullet points of the things that came out of that. I, I saw the strategic connections page in the packet, but it's not quite as detailed as what, I, I mean, I would like to see how this page fits in. Where, where do each of these things go? Bullet point one, two, or three? So, we can see how we're allocating our money and making sure that it's intentional based on our strategic plan, not just intentional on, you know, we gave these things up ten years ago and we need to get them back. We may very well need to do that in some cases, but I'd like to see how it fits into what we just promised our community with those bullet points.
Let me, let me add a layer to this discussion, because everybody's thinking the right thing here, and that is, let's connect all this to our strategic plan. We have approved that plan in December. We are now in the process administratively of trying to flesh out some of the supporting activities and details that need to go with that. Not all of that can be done by June when we do this budget. So, the thought here with the work we've done to this point is, Priority One is the things that we are comfortable recommending to you right now, just based on what we know our, our reality is. Some of those things that are going to come with our strategic plan implementation, that layer, that second layer is, again, just kind of skimming off the top, knowing that a lot more work needs to be done. I, I agree completely that we need to lay all this out, but if you, I don't know that it is realistic for us. I agree completely that we need to lay all this out, but if you, I don't know that it is realistic for us to go through each element of our strategic plan and come up with a five-year plan for each one of them prior to June, because some of this is going to take some significant work and maybe even committee efforts and things of that sort. But we can, we can, as we pull together our final recommendations, place more detail with how we're assigning these and the money pieces that go with that within that strategic plan.
And it may be that, you know, assuming levy passes, it may be something where, okay, we, I think we, I'm feeling a pressure, a sense of pressure and rush to get that budget figured out, but maybe we don't have to. I mean, I know we have to come up with a budget, but I'm just worried that we're going to commit to things that are long-term and then think about it for a year and want to change our mind, but there was staff involved and, you know, you can't go, it's harder, a lot harder to go back. So maybe it ends up being something where there's some portion of that that we're comfortable dedicating to, and the rest we have to put, I know we have to budget it somewhere, maybe we budget it to reserves or something, and then we come back and say, okay, now we've defined the plan, let's do a budget amendment, and we know where we're going to put it.
Which is, is, the two scenarios we present later on do exactly what you're describing. We, we, we address it at a certain level, if it doesn't pass, we have a second tier that if it does, but holding back on things to allow more to happen the following years, so.
I think we're all on the same page.
Yeah, I think so.
I know I'm biased, I just fully recognize that upfront. I would like to move this top on the priority four up to that priority two. What my, what I might say is, rather than making it a licensed mental health professional, adding two mental health professionals. I wouldn't say licensed. The reason I say that is, is because one, brings us up to what we used to do 10 years ago. And we are well past what was effective 10 years ago.
I would like to say that our current staff has done an excellent job meeting the needs as best they can, even though.
And I agree with that. What I hear from them is they are working their heinies off, and they are doing a quality job of it. It's just the issues are growing. And so I'd, rather than just, I'd like to try and at least get in front of it a little. So, and I recognize my bias, but I know as a mental health professional, the things that are coming in are worse and worse. So we need more people, right?
I know part-time is hard to find, but maybe move it up and make it a part-time position for now, and then as that need, make, be a full-time position maybe later on.
And maybe, yeah, or maybe they could do a dual role, they could help with this, what we're talking about in the classroom or whatever of the, I don't know. That's my bias. I feel like the, the people we have are doing a fantastic job, and they are working their heinies off.
They absolutely are.
And, and so I feel like the more options we have.
I think, I personally, I very much appreciate your position on that, but I think our thought process is more in line with what Kim was talking about. Let's do, let's do a small piece now with the idea, we need to do more time and study to know exactly what that path is going to look like and what positions those are.
And I don't disagree with that, I agree with Kim's process, I still was going to say that.
Yeah. I hear you.
Move it up. The items, all of the items actually that are in priority four are really not here because we think they are a priority four. It's more about being prepared and ready to implement them. So they all align with our strategic plan, but being ready for a 18, 19 school year launch of a strings program or foreign language in our elementary schools wouldn't serve those programs well. So that is why those items are on four.
And just from a practical sense, to get back to, I think that was Ryan's probably most likely reference on the number four list with the strings orchestra. The reality of how to implement it, if we're going to do a, a full-time FTE position, we probably need to commit to that in the fall, we probably need to have the courses, options in the course guide that goes out mid-year, and so the enrollments can come in and plan around that. So I don't think there's hesitation on our side of wanting to have that position and have that program. I think it would be difficult for next school year, and I know you brought the point up last year at this time that we need to do this sooner, but I did have follow-up conversations with our one patron who's really interested in this as well, and that was the general timeline he thought would make the most sense as well. So we're, there are a lot of us that think this is going to be a good program for us to add, but it's just a matter of the timing and logistics of getting the courses into the course guides and getting the, the opportunity to recruit fully into the program, so.
I would love to see the early foreign language in the elementary. You know, every study shows you that the earlier you can start introducing them to a foreign language, the quicker they pick it up and just run with it.
So the assumption that we're operating from, and there's going to be two, and I understand we're not to that point yet.
Right.
If the levy does pass, the recommended priorities, is that going to be one, two, three, four? How, I mean?
So in terms of what's on this list today, the scenarios we're going to show you, priority one is the baseline, you know, current status. We could add priority two fairly straightforward with it passing. Anything we do beyond that, we get into that water of, are we preventing ourselves from doing something the following year? How aggressive do we want to go? And that's, that's a topic for another discussion about how aggressive. The scenario I've given for Plan A and Plan B, Plan A is the roughly dollar-wise priority one, Plan B is roughly dollar-wise priority two. Anything beyond that, we could do if it passes, but it might preclude us. So that's, that's where we're going to have to get in that balance discussion about how fast do we want to go in these areas when we, we also want to make sure we take care of the staff members we have at the same time, which is another piece of this puzzle.
If I, if we're going to add, and walk me through the process a little bit. If we're going to add a new program, you know, so let's take the strings program. Would we create the curriculum without having that instructor before we would do it? Do we, do we have that knowledge base in-house to? Or is the typical process, especially in a specialized program, to hire the instructor so that they can help write that curriculum and the course offerings, you know?
Here's what I would say.
The horse question.
Yeah, that is a great question. I would suggest that, you know, the, the commitment point to putting it into the, the course selection guide would be by December, we'd have to make that decision. Your curriculum would not have to be complete at that time. So then it comes down to, you know, you're probably setting up a beginner's class and an intermediate class. You would have a general description of what that looks like, but you wouldn't have to have a fully developed curriculum at that point in time. So then it comes down to a matter of how soon do you have that person hired, and are they free to work on curriculum? Reality is, we've got good, pretty good curriculum opportunities nearby from other districts that we could use as a starting point that have well-developed programs.
There's some connections and some people locally.
We would probably start with that as a resource and then let the new person revise or adjust with us as they come in.
Right.
Did we do a survey on this at some point? Do we remember what the result, I'm sorry, I don't remember what the results were.
400 plus.
Yeah, it was varied. I mean, I think there were plenty that were interested in the program, generally interested. We didn't ask to a level specificity, you're ready to take it tomorrow, ready to enroll.
Well, most people have probably gone by the time we do anything.
Yeah, I think that we, there are a lot of resources in our neighboring communities and individuals who are professionals in this specific field that I do believe would support us, at least initially in development of the program. And then we could have someone come in and refine and reflect on that early work just to make sure it fits for what our kids need the following years they actually enroll and start it.
So, so do you see this process as a one-year process or two?
Once we, it's a one-year process, I think. I mean, I think if we, we would need to decide probably by late fall, early winter that we would want to start it for the next year, and we could have it in place for the next year. Now, the number of courses year one versus the number of ones that would make year two might be different. So that person may not be full, full-time with just orchestra classes the first year, depending on interest levels. But there's always need for electives and so forth. So they can even support the, the other band classes until they get to the full, the full load. But realistically, where they're serving two middle schools and a high school, they'll be full-time very quickly.
Yeah, or initially. So I think it all in what we can put together as a program, what advice do we get from those outside sources and those professionals, and what is the input? And then obviously student interest. But I do agree with Dr. Monsis, I believe it would be a one-year process.
And then the cost of buying some of the instruments.
Yeah, we'll have to look at supplies, music.
It has layers.
Some instruments we, as a school district, and we do for band.
Purchase and some they rent, yes.
And then some, you know, the kids either already have or they rent or.
Yeah, there's two, two or three basic instruments that the kids would own themselves or rent themselves, but then there are some, a couple specialty ones that we would have to provide, and we'd have to come up with storage. We'd have to, you know, they're, it's, it's not a simple straightforward program to add,
and those layers.
I think there would be interest to justify it.
Any other questions and comments on priority four or?
On that page?
Yeah, I think just the last thing I would say, so Dr. Monsis, I see what you're saying. So priority three and four realistically would be where we would have to kind of stop and look at the plans. And I think that makes sense, and just to toss out a few things on things I think we need to be looking at. You know, one, connecting it to our strategic plan, two, connecting it to our scorecards. And I think there are a lot of big decisions to make there. Yes, would I like foreign language in the elementary schools? Yes, but did our community say anything about foreign language, or did they say things about, you know, how does that tie in? When we look at technology, and I'm sorry, Ryan, but on our scorecards, it gets a seven. Interventionists get a, below a five. So is there a different way to accomplish that and spend that $100,000 helping with intervention? Same with the HVAC technician, yeah, I sympathize with our maintenance, but maybe we could spend $10,000 or $20,000 a year on a contract with a company that comes in and does routine maintenance and not have to spend it on staffing. I think we need to take hard looks at all of these things and be creative about how to accomplish what we need to accomplish.
And it comes down to what I've been saying for several years, it's all about resource allocation. You know, what we valued five years ago, do we value the same today? You know, what we did two years ago, is it getting us to the goal that we need to get to today? You know, our student body is changing. You know, children act different than what they did before. I mean, all the evidence is pointing to where we're moving into a new segment that we're not used to dealing with. We only have a limited budget. What serves us the best, because again, it is a limited amount of money. And, you know, staff makes recommendations to us, but ultimately, it's the seven of us that decide because the community put us in these positions to make these decisions. And this is our budget and how we want to allocate the money. So, I mean, it's, it's a serious question and something that deserves a lot of contemplation.
Yeah, we're in a transition year, so hopefully the levy will pass, but I, I agree with Kim. We need to make sure we have a structured approach, and we're listening to the community and getting the biggest bang for our buck on our structures that we set up. And so I agree. Any other comments?
I would just caution, yes, we absolutely want to do what the, the public said, but we also have to remember, they don't see all the things we see sometimes.
Absolutely.
So sometimes we have to take into account to more than what they, what they knew, they just didn't have the information.
I, I agree.
Absolutely.
Lisa, thank you very much. I know this was a lot of work, we, you are amazing, we appreciate you.
I had a lot of help, so.
And I'm sorry, we spent so much time, this is not at you, it is around you, and it's just we're all.
Absolutely understand.
We're all passionate around doing things well. So thank you for all your work on that. Moving on to the next page.
If I can make one more comment. Some of the questions are, they're designed so that we can feel comfortable with the decision that we ultimately make because we're the ones who are going to get questioned. And, you know, we provide, I would hope, a little bit of interference for, for staff members. So if it's, the question is directed at you, it might just because you have the information, and it's, it's not a personal issue, it's more of, we just want to make sure that we properly vet all this so that we can answer those questions honestly.
I'll just share, this is more friendly than our own vetting and cabinet meetings as we discuss these things, getting ready for this meeting.
Exactly.
So you probably take a lot of heat on this. Any way you configure this, it's a win. I mean, all of these are needed things, it's not like you're asking for cake.
There's probably three other pages we could have put in here, things we would really like and things we think we need. I do, I do want to just say that our staff does a really good job of only asking for what they really believe is necessary to make their schools and departments function. And they have to go through a pretty rigorous process when they submit these to us, connecting them to the strategic plan and justifying their need. So we appreciate that from them, that they don't just throw everything at us. Cindy really appreciates that because she puts the spreadsheets together, so.
But, but I will say, I really respect staff that they'll go to the mat for their, for their budget and their departments and.
Well, to be honest with you, we brought more on this list than we would in a normal year just because we knew there might be an opportunity to discuss more options, so.
Thank you. All right, moving on to the next page.
Yeah, I think these next few pages can go quicker.
Yeah.
Might go faster, yeah, so it, I mean, you, you all know that 75% of our budget is going towards staffing, salaries and budgets, and that's where we're talking about new programs, that kind of stuff. Supplies and purchase services just kind of follows along with that, so it's a little easier. So on this page, these items are priorities, prioritized generally in the same manner as the staffing request. And that is that priority one are the things that we feel like we would need whether or not the levy passes, and priority two items are items that might be chosen to move up if we can find other room for them in the budget. And then definitely some of these would want to be picked up if the, if the levy does pass or if certain staffing recommendations are, are selected. Then we have to have the supplies that go along.
Are these not, these aren't capital?
No, these are, for the most part, just supplies and purchase services.
Even though it's a big dollar amount, it's still, it's not capital.
It would not be because individually those are low, low-cost items.
The one that might be capital is the cabinets in the classrooms. Those, those are $6,500 per classroom. That, that would be something we might try to squeeze into the capital projects budget, would be normal for that.
So the first item, the technology plan implementation, that just relates to our five, five-year technology plan. It's consistently called for about $100,000 additional each year as we improve and maintain our technology and continue to implement our plans for the one-to-one devices. Project Lead the Way Supplies and Equipment, we expect an additional about $20,000 in costs for classroom supplies and equipment as we maintain our current offerings and expand those offerings. As we analyze our building supply allocations, we found that the middle schools really require a bit higher supply allocation at their level than they've received in the past. And we also, as Lisa said, expect a significant enrollment increase at the middle school level. So when we look at our supply allocations on the next page, you'll see, see what we've expected there. Addition to buildings and ground supplies line, we've talked many times about the fact that our facilities department self-performs a lot of the maintenance that they do, and that saves us a lot of money, but it does take supplies to do that, so we're seeing some growth in our supplies line. As I said, priority two items are the items that we could consider moving up at some point if the levy passes, possibly. The classroom cabinets.
What is the emergency device management software?
That's a system.
Michael.
But that is, it's a system that Scott Dobson, Ryan Gooding, and myself have investigated. We, the sheer number of emergency devices we have in this district are huge. The preventative maintenance with our HVACs, all, every strobe light, every emergency light system is overwhelming to keep track of. This system, it's a software program that we've vetted and looks at, and it'll, it'll take, we're trying to do on Google Sheets and actually make it effective. That's a one-time expensive price, and then it's much cheaper to keep it up after that. It's, it drops down to like $1,000 after that. But to get it all implemented, it holds all of our buildings accountable. It would make the fire marshal very happy if we had this in place. It really is a neat system.
It's one of those that could easily, if budget allows, even in our current, you know, in this phase one, it could be easily moved up if we can make it work, so.
Yeah.
Not a big cost.
We can find a place for it, yeah.
Okay, so, and then the last two items there are obviously related to the priority four items that we discussed on the previous page. Any other questions about that page? The elementary and middle school supply allocations is similar to what you've seen in past years. There's a portion of our supplies and purchase service budget that's allocated out to the buildings where the purchasing deci- where the purchasing decision for those items lies with the individual building administrator. And a portion of that budget is made up of items that vary in cost depending on the enrollment in the buildings. So every year we use the projected enrollments to allocate these items on a per pupil basis for each building. The first column shows our actual enrollment in September of this year for each of the different buildings. The second column is showing projected enrollment for September two thousand eighteen. And you can see that with that fifth grade class moving up, that's a large class, we expect total enrollment in the elementaries to decrease. While in the middle school, we have an increase of almost a hundred students.
And that's not an exact science, obviously. That's taking our September count and trying to project forward. And we don't want to over assume the growth between grade levels, but the pattern's been they come in as a kindergarten class of four hundred and by the time they get to fifth grade, they're close to five hundred. So we didn't assume all that growth just because we wouldn't want to overestimate on the revenue side either. But it, it gives you a sense that we've got a lot, much, a much bigger fifth grade class moving up.
So kindergarten roundup happens next week, the week after? So that'll give us some additional information and any other information that comes to light between now and when we're looking at our final budget numbers, this will be updated.
Did our per student change much?
These guidelines at the bottom, those are consistent with what they were last year. We've taken a look at, you know, budget versus actual as the year has gone on to make sure that those were adequate again for this next year, and, and they do seem to be.
The big difference there is we hadn't always done that when we had one middle school do that per pupil amount. We were just looking at individual line items. And so that's why you saw the increase request for the middle schools. We're just, they just, supply wise, we haven't been giving them as much. We need to catch them up, so.
Is it time to go through, to go to centralized procurement for our district?
I have been looking at our supplies and purchase service budget. And, you know, you have to carve out a big piece of that that relates to curriculum and things that where you're, you're picking a particular product, so a purchasing department would not have any impact on that. It's more of a curriculum decision. But I've been watching that. And when I see that a five percent decrease or whatever in the total cost of those items would cover someone's budget, then we'll come and ask for such a person. But right now, it just doesn't quite cover it. It wouldn't pay for itself.
All right, moving on. Any questions?
The next chart is, is a very draft chart. It's a Team Ray Pick Priority Considerations. And just so you know kind of what the process there is, they started as a committee brainstorming back in the fall. And it's not surprising that making sure we get steps and maintain our insurance are, are the two highest priorities. They are every year and they continue to be that this year. One thing that we continue to do is itemize what the costs are because when they start working on these, we don't know necessarily what the cost pieces are with them as they start looking at them. So the preliminary December ranking that you saw there is, is very preliminary because since that time, we have continued to come up with the costs associated with each line item. What I will tell you is we do know at this point, based on our bids, that our insurance increase to stay with the exact same plan we have is four percent for next year. We'll have that to you to consider. But there are some choices to make within that in terms of how to spread the increase. And it's kind of convoluted and it would take a while to describe. But basically, one option would be to do a four percent across the board for each of the different options that we have. Another option might be to do a two percent increase for the ones the board typically pays for and the buy-ups take on a little bit higher percentage. Typically, the buy-up plans are the ones that are having the higher losses, so it might be fair to do that. But the committee can give us some input on how that might work. And then when you get down past the twos, the two A's, B's, which is just a split out of all the different lines of our insurance that's being bid this year that we're working through that process on. Number three then is what does it cost to add a hundred dollars to the base of the teacher's schedule? And then spread that across our other schedules and it's about ninety thousand dollars per one hundred. So you might keep that number in mind as we talk a little bit more about some of the details in a little bit. The other number I would have you keep in mind is to just do the steps and that four percent insurance number is about nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So that's kind of that basic package, if you will, just maintaining what we have.
So insurance to keep the basic pattern that we have is basically a million?
Just, just under a million dollars.
Just under a million dollars, just for insurance to maintain.
And steps, the steps.
But, but steps don't increase anybody that's already capped, right?
That's correct.
So, and how many, how many staff members do we have at the cap level?
Around ninety.
Okay.
You, you said something about a four percent increase, but we don't know yet, do we?
Actually, we do. We have the bids and we are going through the process of evaluating those. And so that's how we've been able to come up with an estimate at this point.
So all of it was bid out?
The medical, dental and Lisa's gonna have to cover.
Medical, dental and life insurance? Those are the ones that the board pays for. We bid voluntary benefits a year ago.
So anyhow, the, the committee, when we get done with our, kind of the next phase of our discussion, as typical, I usually give you some, a suggestion on some parameters that we can work with Team Ray Pick on and we'll get to that here in a little bit. But keep in mind the nine hundred and seventy thousand that would take just to do steps and insurance.
Right. I'd like another question. All right, so if we, if we add a, if we add to the base, that raises everybody across the board. Does it raise everybody in the same percentages as what a step would do? Does that make sense?
On a support staff schedule, I think it would do that. On a teacher's schedule, because the steps are not uniform throughout, it may or may not. Probably wouldn't uniformly.
Okay.
So if you had. Might end up being within a percent or something.
If you add a hundred dollars to the base, so it goes at the very beginning of the salary schedule, you're also adding a hundred dollars down to someone who has a master's at twenty years. So that's a, that's a different percentage.
Sure, okay.
So with that, then, the next series of documents, I don't know unless you really want to. We don't need to really spend time on, but, but we've got the technology plan in there that kind of outlines what we've been working on for several years now. And then there's two.
I do have a question about the technology plan. And, and this is kind of, when I made the statement earlier, whether or not decisions we made years ago still serve us. And, and here's why I, I bring that up. I would like some reassurances from staff that one of the things that's come out now is that kids are becoming addicted to technology. And that addiction is actually leading to mental health issues. And that's one of the huge drivers in some of these changes and some of these behavioral issues that we're having. So I'd like a reassurance that the board is not investing in a program that's turning around and biting us on the back end. Do, do, do you see where I, I have an issue where, you know, if we're going to spend, you know, three, four, five hundred thousand dollars to make sure everyone has a device, but yet we send that device home and then it creates behavioral issues for the kids and then we have to turn back and, and now allocate more money to figure it out, how to fix the issue that we're sort of responsible for causing.
Yeah, I haven't looked. Yeah, it's a good question. I haven't spent much time looking at the research on that, so we, we probably need to do that, just to give you some of that, that insurance. I, I think it's another situation where for us, the, if it's a tool used well, it's very effective. And if it's not, it's not, so.
And so that's my next question is, what's the ROI? So, you know, can, can, you know, because I've asked this before. Can, can you give me the data that says, yes, giving a kid a device correlates directly to student performance? You know, because I, I think we've, we've struggled with that over the years and, you know, because.
I've always thought it was very similar to a textbook. The textbook, I had a hard time finding the direct correlation between giving the child a textbook and then his overall endpoint achievement. Because there's so many factors, the high quality teacher, how well they use the textbook, if they open it and read it. All of those things are important components. Technology is very similar to a textbook in that. It's the way you access it, it's the way you use it, it's how it's used by the instructor and by the student that really. But taking that just one piece of technology and saying, I'll be able to correlate directly to endpoint achievement is really not possible. So there's so many other factors.
Other than when we first rolled it out.
And they had it or not, yes.
Statistics at that point where arguably the increase was due to the classrooms that had the technology.
Right, because we had it or not.
So we had one point in time where we could look at it.
Yes.
For two or three years, we collected that kind of comparability data. But now that we're so almost complete, it's hard to make.
The only thing that I would offer as a pushback to the textbook is that typically we encourage kids to get addicted to reading. Whereas the technology now is actually showing to have severe detrimental effects to the child's learning as well as just their overall behavior.
Hopefully not if they're reading on it.
When we're talking about addiction, aren't we talking about like Facebook and Instagram and all of that stuff?
Violent video games, things like that.
Classroom.
So I would, yes, there's a growing issue with that. A lot of the concerns are because people are getting two-year-olds iPads to look at and that, that really affects brain development. So I don't know if the research is out there yet, but I would really want to see impact on various developmental stages. Because by the time that you're a teenager, that it's a different issue than if they're two and holding a pad. To Kim's point, yes, at the teenage level, if all of their relational is Facebook and all of that, then, then it's a false connection. And it, that's different issues than giving them an iPad at two-year-olds. That's, that's actually changing their brain to an addiction. So it's, it's age. I, I would like to see the impact at different ages. Because the, to your point, it might be maybe we don't introduce technology until seven. Let's say that addictions are caused by being introduced to it prior to the age of five or prior to the age of eight. The research isn't out there. It's just now starting to come to my knowledge that it is, they're, they're starting to see it is there. I would like to know, when does it, does that make sense? So I think it's important to have that information moving forward.
So after the technology plan document, there are two documents that Cindy has prepared that just have the, the debt service schedule and the lease, capital lease schedules that we put, including our budget each year. We don't really need to spend time on that unless you want to, but it's just, they're, they're scheduled, they're, they're fixed at this point.
Let's just not pay them.
Okay.
We'll just save that money and, you know, let them repossess the buildings.
Yeah.
I just made our March first payments.
If you ever want to make a bond attorney or one of our bond salesmen sweat, mention that in a meeting.
Yeah, well, I'm not gonna.
It's good for a laugh.
Yeah, I'm not gonna mention that on the next, next S and P rating call that we have when they talk about our credit rating, so. All right, so we're, we're to the point now where we, we need to look at our, our big complex five, multi-year budget planning document. And so I can share with you some of the assumptions we built into a couple scenarios. So normally we just have one version of this and it's almost overwhelming enough by itself. This year, we've added a layer of having a Plan B or a second version to look at.
Which one are you opening for?
We're opening to.
Ten or eleven?
This is page fourteen in your packet.
On Board Docs, is it ten FY nineteen or eleven FY nineteen?
In Board Docs, it would be ten.
Thank you.
I pulled these puppies out.
The last document in that Board Docs that we added today has them all together and they're page numbered. So that might make it a little easier if you want to try to look at it that way.
The last one?
Yeah, the very last one.
Then we can talk page numbers.
Or we can go by the packet if you want to do the hard copy. It might be as easy. We, this is the one time where we, we produced the paper because it's sometimes hard to follow electronically. So on this, well, excuse me, this multi-year document, basically we have a series of columns. We have, the first column is last year's actual. The second column is this year's current budget with the adjustments that have been made already through the course of the year. The third column is the projected budget for next year. And then there's three additional columns that follow after that that just assumes if we keep pretty much status quo moving forward, what is the budget, what happens to the budget? In other words, if we make a decision in this year, how does it impact future years? So we've done this for quite some time this way. Well, we'll spend our time talking about the eighteen nineteen column, which is the one we put a little blue mark at the top of. So just, we're going to walk down through this top page and talk about the assumptions that are built into this. First of all, as I mentioned earlier, assessed valuation, we're assuming a four and a half percent growth in overall AV. Mostly that's due with additional personal property and new construction. Operating levy is assumed in this case to be the same as it is right now. Salary increase for existing staff, two percent. That would represent roughly steps. For our support staff, that's exactly what the steps equate to, is two percent. I believe it's that way on the administrator's schedule as well. For our teachers, it varies a little bit depending on where you're at. So it, it could be something slightly more or less than that. And obviously, if you're at the last step on your column, it could be less than that, obviously, too, in this case. Salary costs for new staff positions, a half percent. The way it equates is it flows through this entire schedule with the benefits that go with it. That's roughly the three hundred thousand dollars in new positions we had in that priority one list. Health insurance increase is four percent. I mentioned that one of the options in the health insurance renewal is that the, the base plan that the district pays for might take only a two percent and the buy-up plans might take a slightly higher percentage, five point six, I believe, is what the scenario to get to, to the equal comparison. If we, if the committee wanted to go that route, which is something they'll talk about in their prioritization process, that might free up a little bit more money to put towards the salary piece. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in a second. The increases for supplies and purchase services, we're only assuming a half percent. And that, that doesn't add up to a whole lot. It's about a hundred and, oh, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. But this year, we had some one-time startup monies built into our operating budget for supplies and furniture and things of that sort because of the reconfiguration. So we won't need to repeat all of those. So some of that money will be freed up to do additional purchase service and supplies. Our priority one list had two hundred thousand dollars there. There's, there's more than that available, but there's also things we haven't quantified yet that we need to have some money to plan to take care of, so.
Where are we at in, in that, the budget for those one-time expenses for the, the restructure? Have we already spent all that money? Is, I mean.
The vast majority of it has been spent.
We've all, we've already spent all of it with the exception of one item we've got left over at the early learning center and a, a small amount in the middle school library budget. The rest is, has been spent.
Did we allocate enough or was?
Oh, they always wanted more.
That's, that's, that's a loaded question, so.
Here's, here's the strategy I would anticipate using. I think we will want to keep some of that money in the budget for next year, not in, you know, the, the number was close to two hundred thousand of kind of startup one-time monies. We might keep forty or fifty thousand of that to make sure we fill in the blanks of things that might have got missed or we didn't do as much as we could have. We'll even have to have some more classrooms outfitted at the middle school level because of the growth that's coming at that grade level. So we'll keep some of that for kind of that next phase to pick up anything we didn't quite get finished the way we should have or, or maybe some additional classrooms. The rest of it then can be freed up to cover any utility increases or any things of that sort that we need to account for, so. So that kind of gives you those scenarios. Now, the, the next segment there has to do with the, the state formula and what our assumptions are in there. That's, that along with property taxes are our two biggest parts of our revenue. So those assumptions are really important because minor adjustments in those can move lots of potential money in terms of what you expect with revenue. So here's what we've done at this point with our enrollment and our weighted ADA, which is kind of your enrollment number, it's your attendance-based enrollment number. We've shown an increase of about seventy-five pupils. The idea enrollment overall in the district would go up roughly fifty. Our early childhood count that gets to be included in the formula next year, we think is going to be somewhere around twenty-five. So that's why that's gone up about seventy-five in our estimate for next year. The state advocacy target is all based on how much money the legislature puts into the budget. So right now, the state actually target is sixty-two forty-one for this year. For next year, if it's fully funded, it's sixty-three oh eight. We picked a number right in the middle. So, you know, if they, if they add, say, sixty or seventy million dollars, we'll be just right. If they fully fund it, it'll be a little more than that. If they leave it where it is this year, it'll be a little less than that. So, or we leave it at the governor's recommendation, it'll be a little less than that. But I think we've, we've got a pretty safe number now, given that the budget chair has indicated he's gonna do everything he can on his side to fully fund the, the formula. So that's actually very good news. When this budget cycle started, nobody was really saying that, so that's a positive. So those assumptions then, the next several pages that follow, just feed off of those assumptions. The next thing that I'll point out is right in the middle of the page, you'll see a seven hundred thousand dollar figure in yellow. That is the, an adjustment or a correction number that's typically three hundred thousand dollars. Because what this assumption, this budget projection tool does is assumes everybody that's here this year is going to be here next year. But the reality is, we have turnover. We have retirements and a lot of times they're replaced with somebody earlier on in the salary schedule, so they're less money. And the last several years, it's been pretty close to three hundred thousand dollars that have been turnover savings. The reason there's a bigger number. The reason there's a bigger number this year is very convoluted, but I think it's something we can actually at this point plan on, is that our medical insurance, and Lisa may have to chime in on this, is a modified self-funded plan. In that they set a maximum liability of rates that you would have to pay and it won't go over that. But if our actual losses are less, we just retain that credit and we don't get invoiced for the entire amount of the premium. And we are running ahead so far this year, I think it's over $500,000 at this point. We've got four more months to go, so we can't assume that it's all gonna be there. But we've had some pretty good months in a row now of claims that have been on the lower side. And that's why our renewal was much less than what typical trend is without changing anything in the plan design. So we built some of that assumption in here. The reality is it'll be money that's not spent this year versus, which will increase starting balances for next year. So we've shown it as a correction in next year, but it really happens at the end of this year in terms of the credit.
Can we give Paul the credit for that, for all of his hard workouts?
I think it's the wellness committee efforts. I think we finally, after playing years of catch-up, we've been in this cost-plus type plan for five, six years now. I think this is the first year we're gonna potentially have some money left at the end of the year that we don't get invoiced for, so that's a good thing.
That and now his wife took the hammer away from him.
So that correction number is larger than it would be normally and it's smaller in the out years as we roll forward. So given all those assumptions, which, you know, it's doing steps and insurance and plus maybe a little bit more, with the SAT and state formula figures, we have that correction number. The other major variable that as you slide down the page, Michelle, just a little further, is we look at a capital projects fund transfer of $1.6 million. That's what it was the year before last year or before this year. This year, it was a much bigger number because we used a lot more money to fund those transition projects. Rattle Ridge, Ukuland, Shoal Elementary, parking lots. We spent a lot more in capital improvements as one-time use of reserves to make sure we finished all the projects the way we needed to. So this would take us back to that, what I consider that basic level that we've been at before, which that $1.6 million transfer, by the time we take out the lease payments that come out of that fund, it's about a million dollars worth of projects. So if you go back to what we talked about at the February work session, that million dollars with the tier-one capital improvements is what would be funded with this approach, roughly. So with all of that in consideration, there's still a use of reserves of a little over $500,000. That's kind of about a, less than a one percent variance, if you will. So that's getting it down to where it's within the margin of error after using quite a bit of reserves the last couple, three years. We've gotten to the point now where we need to taper that off and we're planning to do that. And then with the scenarios in the out years, we go back to a positive balance each year. But it's landing us in that 14, 15% fund balances with all these assumptions in place. So I know that's a lot of different data pieces, but basically it's looking at our priority one items that we talked about here. Talking about a number for Team Ray Peck that would allow at least the steps and the insurance to be maintained. And I would suggest, or I'm going to suggest here a little bit, just a little bit more than that to make that practical and give them some flexibility. So the only other part that I would kind of touch on here is with the, just doing a million dollars worth of capital improvement projects, we're not building any balances and capital improvements and we're just still kind of doing the very basic levels. It doesn't keep us up yet at this point. That's why, this is another reason why Prop RP is really important to us, because it would put more money into that fund as well. Any questions on that set of scenarios? All right, so let's go on down, Michelle, to the next page that looks like this, which will be number 11. If you're pulling up the individual documents, keep going, keep going. This is gonna be the Plan B budget, which starts right here. So we left all the assumptions the same throughout all this document, except for a few key ones at the top of the page. So we go back to that eighteen nineteen column. And we left the assessed value the same in terms of the assumptions there. We increased the operating levy by the 75 cents that's consistent with Prop RP. When it came to the next column, the next section about salaries and benefits, the salary increase for existing staff, instead of two percent, we would suggest five percent at this point, assuming approval. The new staff positions doubling that from the half percent to a percent, which would allow enough for tier one and tier two or any combination that we wanted to make equal about the same amount.
I was gonna say, would you take the Team Ray Peck recommendations? Or would we actually go through a process to look at each position sort of?
I think we could look at the positions individually. What I would suggest to you is that I would, I would want us to commit as much as we could to that Team Ray Peck process, which was very important in terms of what we need to do for our existing staff. I think we could revisit all the other priority new positions as many times as we want to. We would bring to you those priority one positions sooner rather than later so that we can get quality people hired for those classroom positions. But I think the other decisions, if we're gonna add some of those other positions, we could talk about that in April and May even and decide that.
So we did the salary study years ago. And I know that there was an effort to try to move people up within that. If the proposition goes through, will we take a look at that and try to move some of the positions to market? Or will you just try to? I guess the question is, is how would you go about it? Is it just a, just a level spread or are you gonna look at increasing?
Yeah, so there might be a few positions we would pick out in year one. Part of the strategic planning action steps has a kind of a restudy of the market, if you will. I don't know that we would be able to do that comprehensively for next year. To me, year one, my suggestion to this group and Team Ray Peck would be, year one, let's get as much into the schedules holistically that we can with the idea that year two and year three, we can tackle some of those areas that might be further behind than others. I think we want to raise everybody up as much as we can in year one with the idea that that gives us time then to study where we need to target more for year two or year three. That would be my approach, my suggestion for this. Part of that's just a time constraint again, you know, to do a full-blown study is gonna take a little more time to revisit that. It's now, what, five years old basically, so.
How does this model relate to the page we looked at that had the priority one, two, three, and four? Are all four of those in here or none of those are in here?
No, priority one and two would be in this version for the staffing positions or the equivalent dollar.
And were one and two in the model we looked at on page 14?
Just one is in that one.
Okay, so the first model had priority one.
Correct.
This model has priority one and two.
Or the equivalent dollars. We could move the pieces around, but dollar-wise, it would cover that much.
Plus, this model has a one percent increase. I just want to make sure I understand what it means. So when you, I understand the five percent increase, but when you say one percent cost for new staff positions?
Right.
Is that one percent plus anything that was new in priority two?
That would, so priority one was a half percent. And that basically gets you enough additional salary availability to cover that $300,000 that was in priority one. Raising that to one percent, it's just, it doubles that essentially.
It's just expressed in percentages to make a spreadsheet that'll calculate it.
Yeah.
So the one percent, the one percent includes priority one and two?
Correct.
Yes. But some extra?
No.
No?
No.
It comes out to about the same amount if you look back at the total. So the one percent represents one and two? The cost of doing one and two.
Correct.
So there's no, okay, got it.
So the four percent health insurance and the half percent supply costs, there might be a few additional supplies because of things that would be on priority two, but they're not significant in terms of adding those, the programs on that part of the list. None of the other scenarios are much different then, all the way down till you get further towards the bottom of the page, the transfer to capital projects. In this case, the assumption is we'd increase that by a million dollars per year to get to that.
And then what are we, I'm sorry, what are we left with when you get to the bottom of all that?
Okay.
Is there a difference?
Yes. So instead of a negative 570 or whatever it was, we're about 1.3 positive, so we're building some balances in year one.
So more of a, of a procedural question. Since we've spent down our reserves and if the levy does pass, we're gonna make the changes at the start of the year. Will our reserves, will there be enough there to float us until we can actually start collecting?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
What is the reserve balance in this model for eighteen nineteen? I guess it would be, does eighteen nineteen change?
Yes, it does. And so instead of having a negative number of about five, what was it, 570? It's about 1.3 million positive for the year.
I guess, what, I'm sorry, where's our fund balance? Where's our reserve fund?
Seventeen point five percent versus it was in the fourteen.
But where's the dollars? Does it show the dollars?
That's 11, 11.3 million.
So the projected year-end balance is our reserve fund balance?
Yes.
That, are you finding that?
Yeah. And so with all those changes, what this is saying is, I have to look the other page, that's about a million dollars higher?
It's actually about.
1.1 million, no, no?
It's about 1.8 million higher than what would be otherwise.
Higher. So essentially you're saying there's 1.8 million that we're gonna decide what to do with later. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
In this model?
Yes, that's one way to characterize it.
Okay.
And realize too, in the out years, and that's part of what, in this one, the other things that change are in the out years. So if you go back to the top of that page, Michelle, quickly, right there, and scoot over just a little bit, you'll see in 1920, rather than just assuming the two percent steps, there's another four percent for existing staff in 1920, there's another three and a half percent in 2021. If, to give you some context of what does five percent mean on our teacher's schedule, it'd be adding at least $1,500 to the base. It's significant.
And when we're calculating the percent, I'm not getting the exact number you're getting. Is it the 11,338 divided by your revenue of 68, 661 or is there some other revenue we have?
No, it's divided into your expenditures.
Oh, well, there we go.
You know, I knew that we had issues, you know, with our teacher salaries. And so I, over the last month, I just started looking at different positions and looking at salary charts and really looking at the different districts. And even the, even a lot of the starting, the classified staff, to look at Lee Summit compared to us, it's a five-dollar difference. And where ours stops, some of the other ones started. I just, I mean, I knew it was an issue, I just didn't realize, I couldn't wrap my mind completely around that it was that dramatic.
Yeah, it's significant.
Yeah, and it would have been nice to have done a levy that, that we needed to be respectful of our community and the weight of that.
And some of those districts, not only is their levy higher, they just have more property value per people as well, so.
That 1.9 million that's left over though is needed in the second year to continue doing the increases though, correct?
Correct.
So that's not really money, in this model, that's not really available. It's being shown to be used in the future, so to speak.
Right, so what happens then in the out years is, in addition to phasing in the use of the new money, you're gonna have other additional revenues growth as well from your other lines. So it kind of gets all blended together as you move forward from year to year. But the idea is that we would phase in those salary increases. And I'm, you know, the original scenario I gave you was adding 1,000 a year for three years as a hypothetical. I'm gonna suggest to you that if it passes, we try to be a little more aggressive upfront with that because I think it's what our staff needs in addressing the comparison issues across all of our groups.
You know, I won't be here for a lot of the future conversations and maybe even a lot of the rest of us won't either. I would like to see the district never get to the point where we're maintaining, you know, 35 and, you know, the, it wasn't ever 40%, but, you know, fund balances, you know, because instead, you know, I'd rather see it stick at 20 and then anytime it goes over that, you know, unless there's a designated project, but to kick it back and to make sure that we never get into the point where we're at now.
Yeah. Well, we did lower the bar too. We had, with our previous strategic plan goal of balances, we were, what, 25 plus or minus? 23 plus or minus three percent, now we're at 18 to 22, so we've lowered that bar a little bit.
But as our expenditures go up, we're gonna have to, it's gonna go up the requirement. We can stick at 14% or 16, whatever, but the dollars themselves are gonna have to go up.
Yeah, you could have a positive balance and lose on the percentage because your overall budget grew, so.
I don't want to cut off the conversation and we've been sitting here two hours. Does anybody want a five-minute break or are we almost done?
Let me, I think, I think we're close. And so I'm to the point now where I would kind of typically recognizing that there are some decisions that we're gonna make later, obviously. If we're, if we're looking at the Plan A in particular, kind of that very basic, trying to maintain status quo and pick just a few positions that we need to add because of enrollment growth or absolute need, I would suggest to you that we could allocate to Team Ray Peck about a million 50,000. And there's a reason I picked that number, not just the 970,000. One, it gives them some flexibility to choose different benefit packages. For example, they could, they could stick with keeping the insurance increase equal across the board or if they go the two percent for the district-provided plans and spread that out differently, they might still be able to add a couple hundred dollars to the base if that's kind of the recommendation. And it's, it's within the normal give and take that I don't have a big concern going either way. So that would be the number I would suggest that they work with, or we work with them on for the Plan A scenario. The Plan B scenario, to match that, that five percent number, it's gonna take another 1.35 million or a total of 2.4 million. And that would be obviously a much richer pool to work with, that they could add significant dollars to the base and that would spread across the other programs, or the other schedules, if you will.
And that was what I tried to allude to earlier. If the levy does go forward, does it make more sense to give them the million to whatever they do? And then for us to look at what makes the most sense to increase salaries along the way? Or do you just give them the two million? And does that always? I'm not trying to diminish Team Ray Peck at all.
Right, right.
But if we're looking for long-term, does that make the most sense?
I'm gonna say in year two, absolutely it makes the most sense.
Okay.
In year one, I don't know that we would be able to get the market comparability things on all these different categories to really do that well in the short period of time. We'd have to do it to pick and choose to add here, there, or somewhere else. There is within what we typically do with Team Ray Peck, some flexibility there that they might choose to put more in the support staff schedule, which they have done from time to time. So there's still some of that give and play and the board ultimately has the last call. So, I mean, they're making a recommendation based on the input from staff and their preferences, if you will.
Because I just, I just don't want to create the situation where they make the recommendation and then we go a completely different route.
Right.
Because then it truly undermines, you know, the value there. As Kim says, we want to make sure that we do it well so that, you know, it addresses the issue, but at the same time, it doesn't diminish anybody's faith.
Yeah, no, I agree with that completely. I just think with the time we have available and the fact that we know all of our categories are below market, that for year one, focusing on bringing everybody up as much as we can or equally, if you will, that, to me, that makes the most sense for year one. And then we have time to study then through the course of next year if we want to start targeting different areas of our schedules to make adjustments, so.
Perhaps nurses?
Yeah.
I don't really have any comment on that. I don't know if this relates to that though. The only thing that really concerns me here is that that one percent only includes priority one and two. And so priority three and four are essentially not in here anywhere unless we use the money that's in the carryover. And that still leaves open the concept that we don't even know what three and four are and we haven't agreed upon that. Or on one and two. I guess I'm just nervous that we only have allocated one percent to things that I think really, based on looking at that schedule, should be two or three percent. That's not to say I want to take it away from the line above it, but, I mean, there's also the capital budget, there's also other things. That's the only thing that concerns me here is based on the things we want to do, I don't see where we have the money to do very much and the line that's holding it up is that one percent. Am I articulating that about right?
You are, and the question is whether or not we want to move some of those additional expenditures up into for next year. So, I.
Which is why we need to have the conversation.
Yeah. And what I would tell you is that that, I think it's going to be a multi-step approach. I think our thought is, at the March meeting, we would bring those, some of those Category One positions to you to go ahead and authorize, so that we can hire quality people for those middle school staff positions. We've already got them posted. So, we need to fill those with folks, because the enrollment's here regardless. Anything beyond that, we can take more time if we want to, but realizing, at this point in the game, every month we wait reduces our candidate pool and the quality of that pool. So, that's where the time issue is not always convenient, and that's why holding some of that for year two is why we put.
Well, it may be that we hold everything till year two, except for that Category One. I mean, I don't see how we're, you all are going to get all the information we need, and we're going to make any of those. You can't make those decisions one at a time. So, even if you brought us one piece of the three pieces, I still don't think we could make the decisions.
Well, I will tell you that our internal process was to try to help get those prioritized, and we're going, we're asking for your feedback tonight, and we can do that again as much as we need to, but we did, in our efforts, try to organize those in a way that were, in our mind, at least prioritized already.
Right, and I think you've prioritized the things that have been brought to you. I guess what I'm saying is, I think we need to think outside the box, and maybe we have a completely different answer, because I'm not seeing in there the things that I would like to see our district do, and that's why I think we need to have more discussions.
Sure.
I see some of it, but I think this is a time to think outside the box. It's our opportunity to do some things differently and to change things up a little if we need I think we need to talk about that.
So, back at this point then, in terms of trying to get some parameters for Team RPEC work, I'm hopeful that at least the million dollars or a million point oh five dollars that I suggested would be the baseline for them to work with, which we know covers steps and insurance plus a little bit more. Is there any hesitation about at least doing that for that effort?
So, you took a million point oh five, so that 50,000. So, if we kind of held that back, we could bump that, the one that's a Priority Four, up a little higher and.
So, I'll argue with you on that one, between, only because it's the same, it's the same price. So, like, another additional help for mental health versus a strings program for the first year, and I'm not, I'm not saying I don't want strings. I'm just saying if I were given the choice of adding a strings program or doing, having more support for our mental health, because we know we need it, I would lean toward the mental health.
But the strings could help with the mental health issue.
It can, but it's a more of a delay. But I want to do the strings, but in terms of prioritizing for next year, I would prioritize an additional mental, but that's, just because I deal with these.
Sure.
And I just want to make sure we're, but I love strings. I think it's, needs to be part of our ongoing program, and I would love to, if the levy passes, not guarantee, but I want to make sure that it's in place, not next fall, but the following. I think it would, once the money starts coming in.
And that's the beautiful thing about the budget negotiation process.
Yeah, yeah.
Obviously.
Do we have a work, I'm not seeing a work session on my calendar, but that doesn't mean.
The challenge with the work session scheduling at this point is we are at the election time transition to where it's hard to have one in early April, prior to our April meeting.
I was just asking when the next one is scheduled.
We actually don't have one scheduled. We usually haven't had one unless we've added one, and we have a couple of times.
I really think, I mean, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I think we have a lot to talk about, about this budget, and I think a work session's really the best way to do that. And I see what you mean. I don't know, April or May sometime.
No, I.
I mean, am I the only one that wants to keep talking about the budget?
No, 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 the only thing, I, sorry, the thing I was internally processing is, I feel bad for the people getting elected, because they'd be elected and a week later we're arguing budget.
Well, that's part of the gig, right.
But, so I didn't, I was just internally processing.
I mean, we can't put off making decisions just because we have.
No, I was just trying to decide, do we do it in April or early May? Give them a couple of weeks to get acclimated. That was my only processing. I think we need to do.
And the flip side of that is, staff needs time to prepare, and then June is when the budget is.
So, I do think we need to add one in. When would be a good time?
When do we have to do our reconfiguration? Is it, I'm in it within so many days of the election, we have to do that?
We have that scheduled already. It's two weeks after the election on the 17th.
Yeah, it's on April 17.
Do we piggyback it? Can we make it into a work session afterward?
Ah, that'd be tough that night.
Okay.
Those people are just getting sworn in. You can't do that to them.
That's fair, that's fair. That's why I'm saying, so clearly, we need to.
Or next meeting, we have the 26th, then, April, that one that's scheduled.
And for what it's worth, I'm okay with the prioritization, except for that one issue.
Yeah, I get you. I hear you.
So, could we do like the 19th, maybe? I mean, that's still kind of pushing it, but.
I think we need to meet. It's just a matter of when, when is a good time?
Perhaps we could leave that to Dr. Montes to sort it out.
We can, we can work on that. And part of it is, part of it is us trying to figure out what we can reasonably put together information-wise, because right now, we're in a position where we've got multiple opinions on how to focus this, and we're going to do our best to try to bring you the information that you want, but that may take some offline conversations to understand what that is.
Well, I like Kim's point about the behavior intervention thing, because I kind of vaguely remember seeing it to the pyramid of where they, all that falls into place, and I think that would be a good segue into the mental.
Yeah, and I think we can also do more detailed connections to the strategic plan, as we talked about earlier. I think that is something we could easily put together. Just because, let's just say hypothetically it passes, the challenges of making choices is not going to get any easier, folks. In some ways, it gets more complicated, because now we have more options to consider realistically.
So, the question before us is, going ahead with some of these Tier One, Priority Ones, we can get them hired and get quality staff. So, that's the first question before us. And then, the second question before us is, are we okay with going ahead and giving RPEC, Team RPEC?
What priorities should we give them?
What priorities should we give them?
Right. Parameters, not priorities.
So, that's the two questions before us, right?
Exactly.
Okay, so the first question, do we go ahead so that we can get quality staff and be in that kind of first round of hire? Are we going to go ahead and give the okay on that first set of priority? Right? So, that's the question before us, so.
And it's not a decision point, we just need your consensus, so that we can bring you the formal recommendations at the next meeting.
Well, the teachers, I would say yes. I mean, we've got to get those hired. And you said you've already posted, because, I mean, it's a have-to, regardless of whatever happens.
We think so, right.
I mean, with population, we have to do what we got to do to get the kids educated and not have classrooms of 50 kids per student.
Yeah.
If it gives us more purchasing power in our talent pool, I would support that.
I'm still, I'm a little hesitant on the facilities director thing. I'm still a little fuzzy on that one, but.
So, I would be okay, I would be, again, this is my bet. I would be okay with that, but I feel like we really need to do that first one on the Priority Two up into a Priority One, but that's my bet. I just, it just shows proactivity, we're going to need it no matter what we decide in terms of that pyramid.
I'd rather do that than the facilities director. I mean, if we're going to talk priorities, I can't even talk to it.
I don't know. I'm on the facilities director. I think that we are becoming large enough of a district and enough facility issues, and we're doing enough internally. It makes sense to have that be.
I guess I'd want to see like a breakdown, kind of like the behavior intervention of where it all falls, I guess, is what I'm trying to wrap my mind around. Why do we need to add one more person? When we have an energy manager, which I'm still a little unclear what he does besides tell people to turn their computers and lights off. So, I guess my thinking is have that person be one person, or that job be one job, would be my suggestion, I guess.
So, it would be helpful for you to get a job description on what the people are doing now, to see if those jobs can be blended or if they truly are distinct jobs.
I mean, custodian and maintenance, that's pretty obvious, you know, it's kind of what they do, but where, I guess a pyramid, like a company has, you know, a.
A structural chart?
There you go.
Yeah, I can have that to you in 30 minutes.
Yeah.
I would say a structural chart and a basic job description.
I will have you all of that tonight before I leave. This is a position that's highly needed. I mean, to the tune of, it's saving us probably a quarter million or more a year, potentially, on what we're able to do in-house, if we didn't have that facilitation in that department.
I agree on that one.
Yeah, and you know budgets better than I do, and I'm not wanting to knock any of these out, I'm just wanting to add this one into the Priority One. So, I'm not wanting, but that's my bet. But, in lieu of that, I'm not going to hold up going ahead and hiring those people, because there's not a time limit on this one.
That's what I was going to suggest. If we're going to the licensed professional.
We can do that this summer.
They don't follow a school year calendar in their career path typically, so.
So, I'm not going to hold that up, because we can do that this summer. But I'm okay with going, we're just giving feedback, I'm not speaking for the board, I'm just speaking for me, but I'm okay with going ahead and moving toward that Priority One. How do the rest of you feel going ahead and answering that? Is everyone okay with the Priority One? Do you have, do you, okay, so he'll get you the information, and you can do question and answer with him, and then we'll move forward on that. But you're getting from the majority of the board, okay, move on that. Second question is about RPEC, Team RPEC.
And parameters.
And the parameters on that. So, what are your thoughts on that, to give feedback to administration?
Might I make another suggestion? With that, the 1.05 million is intentional for a reason, because I think it gives them some choices within, while staying at that baseline level of it not passing. If there's more money available, what I could do is work with them on, let's say for every, if there was, pick a number, it might be another million rather than another million point four or whatever. I could pick a number that's just a number for them to work within that parameter, knowing that if there's more, they can, they would put it here. So, that might not pin us down to, it's either A or B, it's A, or it's B, or something beyond that, if it's available. Does that make it any easier for us to work with some parameters with them? I want their work to be productive, because we only get them together typically once a month, and we want them to be working towards something if it passes.
Well, I'm confused. Are you wanting them to give you two sets of recommendations if it passes and if it doesn't?
Actually, probably three sets. If it doesn't pass, there's a recommendation. If it passes, here's a recommendation, and if the board chooses to put more towards that allowance or pot of money, here would be where the third layer would go, so.
So, what's the second layer? So, I understand the first layer is a million.
So, the second layer might be 2 million, instead of 2.4.
So, what's that 5% equate to?
The 5% equates to the 2.4 million.